Mr. President.
Good evening, Councilor Sullivan.
Let's hopefully we can take a moment of silence. He's actually Councilor Azak, constituent, but really a good Brocktonian. Peter Paz passed away. Really, just a really nice human being. He was a father, a grandfather, and he was really good friends, really buddies with Chris McMillan, our former colleague. He passed away unfortunately this weekend at the age of 51. So if we could do that, I think that would mean a lot to his family. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Clark, you ready?
All set.
Okay.
The acceptance of the minutes of September 10th, 2018, City Council meeting.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have the appointments of the promotion of William C. Carpenter to the rank-
Mr. President, I'm going to ask that we take these collectively items two through seven. I'm also going to act that we take these under suspension rules and act these tonight.
Second. Motion made in second, and we're going to take them collectively. We're going to act these tonight. All in favor of that? Close, Mr. Clark. Please read the-
Promotion of William G. Carpenter to the rank of Sergeant in the Brockton Police Department. Promotion of Arthur McNulty to the rank of Lieutenant in the Brockton Police Department. Promotion of Kenneth Ellis to the rank of Sergeant in the Brockton Police Department. Promotion of Edward Kurschank to the rank of Sergeant in the Brockton Police Department. Promotion of Christopher McDermott to the rank of Sergeant in the Brockton Police Department. And the promotion of Robert Toledo to the rank of Sergeant in the Brockton Police Department.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote. Now, clerk, please call roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darncourt?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
That's 10 in the affirmative.
Mr. President, I make a motion for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail.
Second. Motion made in second for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Reconsideration fails. Next item, Mr. Clark.
Reappointment of Jason Mosley as a special police officer, the city of Brockton, for one-year term, ending September 2019.
Now, refer to the committee on finance.
Reappointment of Kevin A. Smith as a special police officer, the city of Brockton, for one-year term, ending September 2019.
Refer to the committee on finance.
Reappointment of Daniel J. Vaughn as a special police officer, city of Brockton, for one-year term, ending September 2019.
Refer to the committee on finance.
Reappointment of Julie Marshrell as a special police officer, city of Brockton, for one-year term, ending September 2019.
Refer to the committee on finance.
Reappointment of Jennifer Zell Hancock as a special police officer, city of Brockton, for one-year term, ending September 2019.
Refer to the committee on finance.
Appointment of Julie Castor, 55 Oak Street, Hyde Park, to the position of part-time assessor for the city of Brockton.
Refer to the committee on finance.
We have a hearing. Petition of Dynamic Collision for a transfer of a motor vehicle repair body license located at 1114 Montello Street, in city clerk's office, August 1st, 2018. Hearing is signed for September 24th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. All the necessary paperwork is on file, and the fire department has no objections.
Time hasn't arrived. I declare the hearing open. If there's somebody here in favor, I'll ask them to come up and please speak to the public, give them a moment to address.
My name is Michael Palmlow. I'm owner of Dynamic Collision. I'd like to transfer my license from 181 to my new residence, which is 1114 Montello Street. All the proper work has been done, all the electrical, the spray booth, the fire department's been there. Everything's been written off. I just need to go ahead so I can continue my business in Brockton.
Transfer. Okay. Anybody, Councilor Clark?
Just a question. You just said your residence, but you mean your business.
My business, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Councilor Nacastro.
Good evening. Mr. Palmlow, you are transferring this, and we're going to merge this in with your existing license. Is that right?
Yes.
And you've asked me to increase your Saturday hours from 7:00 to 3:30 until 7:00 until 7:00?
Yes.
And I think we can go along with that.
Okay.
Subject to review. If there's any problem, we may roll you back in the future. How's that?
That works fine.
And I think all the rest of your existing conditions will remain the same, the stipulations on your existing license.
Yes.
Do you need me to read those?
I don't think, do we need them right, Mr. Clark?
I beg your pardon.
Stipulations are staying the same. Do we need them right again?
No, not if they're going to stay the same. We'll just transfer them from that license to this one.
From the next, yeah, that's fine.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anyone else who wants to be heard in favor of? Please come forward and state your name and address to the clerk.
Hello. My name is David Lynch. I'm a neighbor, a very dear friend of his, and I own the property. I would really appreciate it. We've done a great job on the property. We've done a tremendous job on it. As everyone knows what it was down there, I think we've done a pretty good job on the Camp Hallou into the city, and I'd really appreciate it, guys, young ladies, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to be heard in favor? See, and I declare that part of the hearing closed. Anybody here in opposition? See, and I declare that part of the hearing closed. Question now is on granting. All in favor?
Motion granted.
Pardon me?
Motion granted.
Motion granted, second. All in favor? Opposed, so granted. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, everyone, very much.
Petition of Christopher Salsman for a license to solicit and canvass on behalf of the Direct Energy and Alternates Energy Provider.
Time hasn't arrived. I declare the hearing open. If that gentleman is here, we should have to come up and state their name and address. The microphone here.
Christopher Salsman.
Christopher Young, soliciting for canvassing, I believe. Is that for Direct Energy? Is that it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Counselors, any questions? Councilor Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. Thanks for being here. What are your plans in terms of, you're going door-to-door, correct? Yes. What are the hours that you go? What's the earliest to go and the latest you go during the day?
So usually by the time we get to, like, our neighborhoods, it's about, like, 1:00 and then we go until, like, 7:00 at the latest.
7:00 at the latest. Can we put a stip on that? Because I had someone come to my house at quarter to nine one night, and that's unacceptable.
Yeah.
Not you guys, but someone else did. Also, you have to carry a badge. You know that, right? Yeah, but it has to be displayed.
Yeah, we actually have our IDs and our city permits for the city of-
And they'll both, they'll be visible to the public. They'll be out. Okay. Okay, thank you.
What was the time frame again? I'm sorry.
One to seven.
Oh, one to seven, okay.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anyone else, councilor?
How long do you plan on doing this? Like, in terms of, like, a year or a couple months?
I mean, it would really depend on how, like, if we, like, our plan is just talk to as many people as we can.
Okay.
So we're going to go through, like, we, it's pretty organized how we do it. We'll go and just talk to, like, pretty much as many residents as we can, see who we can help out with their electricity.
What I'm saying is that in terms of, like, I mean, I know, and how do I put this? Let's say that you start in October, so I'm assuming this is something that will be until, like, 2019?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you don't know. I mean, it just-
I mean, I don't know. I don't know how long it will take us to go through, like, to finish off, like, through the city of Brockton.
Okay.
But I guess what we're looking for is, I think it was a year that we were looking for.
Okay. Have you done, have you done this before in?
Not in Brockton.
Okay, not in Brockton, okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Councilor Powell. He asked my question, Mr. President. Thank you. Anyone, anyone else? I declare that part of the hearing closed. Anybody here in opposition? See, and I declare that part of the hearing closed. The question now is on granting, and I would indicate that granting with the stipulation that it would be between 1:00 and 7:00 p.m. All in favor of that? Opposed? So be. Thank you, good luck.
Petition of Jacob Billson for a license to solicit and canvass on behalf of Direct Energy and Alternates Energy Provider and Clerk's Office, September 10th, 2018. Hearing assigned for September 24th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m.
Time hasn't arrived. I declare that hearing open, and I mean, we have Jacob in front of us. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening. How are you doing?
Anything you'd like to say?
Same thing that you said.
Just follow it in.
Yeah, it's just, to kind of answer your question a little bit better, Brockton, roughly, like, 90,000 residents or whatever, according to citydata.com, so kind of, we always go for a year permit as best we can, just because it gives us more time to kind of saturate our market. But other than that, that's, to answer your question a little bit more in depth, that's all I would add.
Very good.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilor, what?
Have you done this before, like, have you done-
Not in Brockton, but I've been, yeah, door-to-door for about three years now, so I'm pretty experienced.
Okay. So with the same company?
Direct, I've worked with, we moved up here from New Jersey a couple months ago, so I've worked with other alternate energy providers, yes, but Direct Energy is a little bit better, and they pay us a little bit more. That's why we're up in Massachusetts, which is nice. So, yeah, I've been, but I've been doing door-to-door for a while.
So in terms of town and cities, I mean, how many towns and cities have you guys done this before so far?
Great question. I can't, I can speak for myself, but we have an office of about 25 people. Just Chris and I are applying for Brockton, but we've gone through most of the city, so like Brighton, Hyde Park, Framingham, which is where our office is centrally located. We're finishing up Waltham right now, Milton, and the rest of us are heading to, those that aren't applying for other permits are going to Watertown, because it's, different cities only need the Boston city permit, so as we kind of go, it's easier to go.
Well, sounds good. Thank you, Mr. President.
No problem.
Mr. President?
Councilor Sullivan.
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for being here tonight. Same thing, I mean, you concur one to seven is-
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
If I'm knocking on your door at quarter to nine, you don't want to talk to me anyway.
Yeah, no. Do you guys go in pairs? You work one side of the street, someone else works another, or do you just go solo?
Depends on experience level and everything like that. Chris and I are both pretty experienced, so we'll probably both be either solo, or if we want to have some more fun, we'll be together.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think my biggest concern is, first of all, you guys are doing it the right way. There's a lot of solicitors that come that don't do it the right way.
Direct energy, yeah.
But the senior citizens, I mean, if someone's knocking on my door at 6:45, I mean, you know, so I just, I was just asking you, err on the side of caution when you do your listing, you know, like, when we walk campaign-wise, we know who we're knocking, you know, and the age and demographics, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Good luck. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councilor. Anyone else here who wants to be heard in favor, please come forward and state their name. See, and I declare that part of the hearing closed. Anybody here in opposition? See, and I declare that part of the hearing closed. Question is on granting and with the same stipulations between 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. Motion's been, all in favor? Opposed? So granted.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Petition of Mass Electric Company of Verizon, New England, Inc., request permission to install stump pole 3-84 on Spring Avenue, 40 feet northeast of existing pole 3, in order to remove two guide wires off a tree per the city of Brockton.
Time hasn't arrived. I declare the hearing open. If somebody here in favor, please come forward and state their name to the clerk. Good evening, how are you?
My name's Simon Young. I'm a Brockton engineer. I'm representing Peter Ewing. That took care of this engineering, and we're basically removing the tree guy wires from the dead trees from these two locations and installing a stub pole to support the existing poles that's on the other side of the street.
Okay, very good. Any questions, councilors? Anyone have any questions? Is there anyone else here in favor that wants to be heard? Please come forward.
I'm ready.
I'm going to, I'm going to get right to that next. Is there anybody here in opposition? Please come forward.
The letter that this- My name is Emily Lacature. My mother owns the property, real Lacature. I'm a power of attorney because of her dementia. I measured 40 feet north of pole 39, and it's our front lawn. So I oppose the stump pole on our front lawn. I don't know where you plan on putting it, but where were you going to put the stump pole?
I believe they would be next to the dead tree. I wasn't the one engineering it, so usually it would be at the end of the sidewalk.
It's going to be on the sidewalk?
Yeah, at the edge of the sidewalk.
Okay, because the guide wire before was in our dead tree. That's why you had to take the guide wire out, because the tree died. So there's another tree next to it, so I'm not sure.
I was on site, so if there's another tree next to it, we wouldn't use that tree again.
I understand that, but you're going to put it on the sidewalk then? It's not going to be on our lawn?
Yeah.
Right, correct.
If it's on your lawn, we'll ask you for-
It's going to be on the sidewalk. Thank you.
All right.
I'm all set with that. I just don't want it on my front lawn.
Okay, no, we're all set, okay. Anyone else who wants to be heard in opposition, too? Please come forward and state your name and address to the clerk.
Enrique Fernandez. I'm the owner of 369 Court Street, which are pole 39.
All right, we didn't get to that, we haven't gotten to that one yet, sir. That would be next, okay?
The next one.
That's our next one.
Okay.
Yep. Anyone else in concerns with the Spring Avenue one?
Yeah.
No? I declare the hearing closed at this point in time. We'll be acting on this one at the end of the, at the end of the meeting, okay?
Mr. President, was there, was there a plan submitted relative to this matter?
I, was there a plan submitted, Mr. Clerk?
I'm sorry, I can't-
Is there, is there a plan, was there a plan submitted in regards to this?
Yes, there's a plan, both of these submitted, right.
Okay. It is in the clerk's office.
And it was clearly illustrated that it would, it has to be on the public domain. It can't be on private property. It was clearly depicted as such.
Clearly shows where the pole is going.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Yep. We'll be acting on that at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Next item.
Petition of Mass Electric Company of Verizon, New England, Inc., request permission to install stub pole 39-84 on Court Street, 40 feet north of existing pole 39, in order to support leaning pole 39. A guide wire was previously removed from the tree in front of house number 366.
Time hasn't arrived. I declare the hearing open. If there's someone here in favor, please, again, state your name to the clerk.
My name's Simon Young. I'm a Brockton engineer. I think it's going to be the same issue as the other one. We're placing the tree guy with a stub pole. I think the lady over there was talking about this one.
Okay.
That's what I thought, too.
Is there anyone else here that wants to be heard in favor of? Please come forward and state your name and address to the clerk. See, and I declare that part of the hearing closed. Is there anybody here in opposition who wants to be heard? Please come forward and state your name to the clerk.
My name's Enrique Fernandez. I'm the owner of 369 Court Street.
Okay.
I believe Verizon Electric Company, they were there about a year ago, they replaced the pole, and they left a stub pole there after they took the cable across from 366 Court Street, one you guys talked about earlier. So now, I don't know what they're talking about, what they're planning on replacing, but they haven't took the old pole that was damaged, never took it down. They left it there. Pole 39, that actually feeds into my building, and all the wires are sagging because-
Yeah.
-the old stub pole's still there. It's pulling all the way.
Yeah. Is that, is that something that you're going to, you people are going to look at removing, taking a look at, try to?
I wasn't familiar with the site, so I'm just here representing the area. There shouldn't be any issues, or I'm not familiar with an actual pole that needs to be moved.
Well, they replaced pole 39 last year, because it was leaning, it was damaged.
Right.
They went in, they replaced the pole, they changed all the wiring over to the new pole, and the original pole that was, that was leaning, they cut half of it, and half is, the stub pole's actually still there.
Right.
It never came back to me. I'm sorry.
Double pole.
So it's a double pole? Yeah.
Yeah, I, to be truthful with you, and not being resentful to the gentlemen that's here, it seems that to be, I have it that when we take down a pole, we'll take everything off, we leave half of it, and it stays there for 10 years, to be truthful with you. I hate to tell you the ones I have in my ward, but I think this one here, I think we should postpone and get some accurate more information for, for the Navy to make sure that, you know, it's being done the correct way. That's my thought.
Okay.
On the, on the idea of a motion, I mean, my humble suggestion would be to make it conditioned upon them removing the double pole, that the council would only grant this and will only be verified as approved if the double pole's removed, because I agree with you, they're rampant throughout the city.
Yeah.
And I understand how it works, but as opposed to, I mean, he's just pinch hitting for someone, and thank you for being here tonight, but instead of postponing it, you know, we do a condition precedent that we're only going to grant it, and they can only get approval from the clerk's office with the proof that the double pole's removed. That'd be my suggestion. When we get to that point at the end of the-
Right, when we get to, when we get to that point, and we just got to make sure that through the clerk's office that it is, it has been done. Satisfied. To make sure that it has been satisfied to the, to the neighbor, to be truthful with you, not just that, you know, we mentioned it on a piece of paper. It's got to be correct. So we will, we will discuss that when we get to the, to the end of it, okay?
We appreciate that.
Because we'll be voting to the end, all right?
Very much.
Okay. Anyone else here in opposition like to be heard? See, and I declare that part of the hearing closed. Councilor Azak?
I just have a question that I need to clarify. The gentleman stated your name is Simon Young.
Yeah.
You said you're a Brockton engineer. I would just like to, you don't work for the city of Brockton, it's for the company, correct?
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
So, no, so are you an engineer for Mass Electric Company?
Mass Electric.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Next item, Mr. Clark.
We have a report of the Audit Committee for this meeting of September 6th, 2018.
Accepted and placed on file.
Report of the Public Safety Committee for this meeting of September 17th, 2018.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a report of the Finance Committee for this meeting of September 17th, 2018.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the chief of the Fire Department requesting that the city council authorize the acceptance of expenditures of grant funds in the amount of $671,897 from the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Department of Homeland Security to the City of Brockton Fire Department grant fund. The intended use of these funds is to fund the purchase of 90 self-contained breathing apparatuses, 87 face pieces, a breathing air compressor, and a cylinder fill station for the Brockton Fire Department. This will replace their entire inventory of breathing apparatus and update their filling capabilities. There is a 10% match from the city, which is required in the amount of $67,189. An appropriation from unappropriated estimate receipts of fiscal 19 of the general fund, $67,189, to Fire Department FEMA DHS grant match, $67,189, is requested.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the chairman of the Board of Assessors requesting in accordance with section 2-131 of the revised auditors, the authority to offer a hiring rate at top step for the position of part-time member Board of Assessors for Julie Castor.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the CFO requesting in accordance with section 2-131 of the revised auditors, the authority to offer a hiring rate at top step for the position of Budget Director for Karen Preville, and in order to do this, hereby request an appropriation of $10,000 from unappropriated fiscal 19 receipts of the general funds, $10,000 to the Finance Department Personal Services, $10,000. The position does not require council approval, but the salary decision does.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Chief Procurement Officer supporting the sale of former Whitman and Howard schools. Both buildings have remained vacant for many years and no longer ready use of the city. If the disposal of the properties is approved by the city council, the Chief Procurement Department, in conjunction with the Office of Planning and Economic Development, will begin the process of selling by way of RFP.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Executive Director of the Brockton Redevelopment Authority notifying the progress report of the Petronali Way Municipal Garage.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending that the city council authorize a loan of $5 million as suggested by the city bond council, Richard Manley of Lock Lord LLP. The borrowing is to provide funding for the additional cost of Petronali Way Municipal Garage project, as detailed in a letter to him dated September 7th, 2018, from Robert Jenkins, Executive Director of the Brockton Redevelopment Authority.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same, however, that is a conditional certification.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have the promotion of Brenda Perez.
Councilor Sullivan.
Mr. President, I'm going to ask that we take collectively 36 through 47, or 42, agenda, please, 36 through 42. agenda items, please, 36 to 42.
Second. Motion been made, and, and second, we're gonna take these items collectively and suspend the rules and act on them, correct?
We don't need to.
The following promotions?
No, just, just take them collectively, counsel, I mean, Mr. Clerk.
The following promotions, read the city council September 10. They were referred to the Standing Committee on Finance, and the report on all of them were favorable. The promotion of Brenda Perez to the rank of sergeant. We have the promotion of Victor Perez to the rank of sergeant. We have the promotion of Frank Barrio to the rank of lieutenant. We have the promotion of Kevin Jones to the rank of lieutenant. Promotion of Christopher LaFrance to the rank of captain. Promotion of William Halasy to the rank of captain. And the promotion of William G. Carpenter to the rank of temporary sergeant in the Brockton Police Department.
Confirmations by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. President, I have a quick question.
Counselor.
I'm a little confused, because I believe in, in agenda item number, number two.
Yes.
We basically promoted William G. Carpenter to the rank of sergeant, but yet now, on this particular item 42, he is being promoted to a temporary sergeant.
Because at that point in time, the temporary position was a backfill position, and then the ones that were before you this evening are based upon the ordinance that just was passed.
So what happens to the temp sergeant?
It basically
It's gone.
It's in limbo?
It's gone, pretty, yeah, it's, it's pretty much gone, that's why. That's what happened to it. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Asak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Ari?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative?
The orders are confirmed.
We order that the city council hereby declare that the vacant land of Thatcher Street in Brockton, Mass, identified as assessors parcel 132-015, plot 21, containing 36,100 square feet, more or less, described in the plan dated March 8, 2018, entitled Plan of Land Prepared by J. C. Holbrook Engineering, Inc., Registered Professional Engineers and Land Surveyors, and more fully identified than Exhibit A, is surplus property and available for disposition, and that the mayor and/or the treasurer be authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to sell the property for nominal consideration to Donald A. Galanti, Jr., as he is the trustee of the Regal Trust, a Mass nominee trust dated May 11, 2000, and recorded at Book 818512, Page 1 of the Plymouth County Register of Deeds. In council, June 25, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance, that report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Asak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Ari?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Mr. President, I make a motion for reconsideration, hopes it doesn't prevail.
Second. Motion been made, and second, for reconsideration, hopes it does not prevail. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Reconsideration fails.
Petition to sign design of 170 Liberty Street, Brockton, for a sign permit located at Marion Brothers, 137 Main Street, Brockton, Mass. In council, August 27, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Public Safety, that report was favorable.
Question on this is granting by a hand vote. All in favor of that? Opposed? So passes?
Petition to Smart Device Solutions, LLC, Kyle Barbario, for a second-hand articles license located at 200 West Gate Drive, in council, August 27, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Public Safety, that report was favorable.
Question again is on by a hand vote. All in favor? Opposed and granted.
Order in compliance with the provisions of the election laws, notice is hereby given that the state election will be held on Tuesday, November 6, 2018, at the designated polling places.
Refer to the Committee on Finance.
Order that the moratorium for the issuance of sewer connection permits in Ward 6 are terminated.
Mr. President?
Counselor Lally.
I would like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and act on this item.
Second.
Really, the actual sewer, sewer moratorium expired a long time ago. All this is really doing is, you know, placing us in a position where we can be sued. There's no, there's no point, it carries no weight.
It doesn't really need much discussion either.
No.
Motion's been made, and second, that we suspend the rules and act on that this evening. All in favor of that? Opposed? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Asak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Ari?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Nacast, Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Order in accordance with Section 2-131 of the revised auditors of the city council, authorize the chairman of the Board of Assessors to offer a hiring rate at top step for the position of part-time member Board of Assessors for Julie Castor.
Refer to the Committee on Finance.
Order that the city council hereby declare the Whitman School at 25 Mannament Avenue, map 059, parcel 046, as shown on the attached plan, surplus and available for disposition and sale to the most advantageous proposer after soliciting requests for proposals, and further that the mayor be, and hereby is authorized, to execute any and all documents necessary to dispose of said property.
Refer to the Committee on Real Estate.
President, if I could, there's a scribbler's error, it's 25 Mannament Street, it's not an avenue, it's Mannament Street. I know that because I walked it for six years going to Whitman School, up that little hill.
Mannament Street.
Both ways, with no shoes.
We'll make that correction.
Thank you.
Order that the city council hereby declare the Howard School at 849 North Main Street, map 103, parcel 090, as shown on the attached plan, surplus and available for disposition and sale to the most advantageous proposer after soliciting requests for proposals, and further that the mayor be, and hereby is authorized, to execute any and all documents necessary to dispose of said properties.
Refer to the Committee on Real Estate.
Order that the sum of $5 million is appropriated to pay additional costs for developing a parking garage, and for making street and traffic improvements within a development district approved by the city, and be undertaken in conjunction with Trinity Financial, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval, approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 40Q, the District Improvement Finance Statute, Mass General Law, Chapter 44, and/or other enabling authorities, and to wish bonds or notes of the city therefore, that such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the city, although such bonds or notes shall be payable in the first instance for property tax revenue expected to be derived from a new development within the development district. The amount authorized to be borrowed pursuant to this order shall be expended in addition to all amounts previously appropriated by the city for this project, as well as all other amounts received by the city from the Commonwealth of Mass and from Trinity Financial to pay costs of the projects. Order that any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approached by this order, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this order in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Order that the city treasurer is authorized to file an application with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under Chapter 44A of the General Laws, any and all bonds or notes of the city authorized by this vote, and to provide such information and execute such documents as the municipal finance oversight board of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts may require.
Refer to the Committee on Finance, and counselors.
Go ahead.
I just wanna make a, a point, that number 49 and 50 both go to real estate. I may have made a mistake on one of them, so they're both real estate items.
Mr. President?
Counselor Foul.
On the item that you just read, there is a companion agenda item resolved, which Counselor Sullivan and I filed, and we, we thought that it might be wise to put that to the second finance meeting in October to give people a chance to prepare materials and get them out to the council.
Okay, we can do that.
That's acceptable to you. Thank you.
Okay, very good. And that's going to finance, so we're, number 52, correct, Mr. Clerk?
An appropriate $10,000 from the unappropriated fiscal 19 receipts of the general fund, $10,000 to Finance Department Personal Services.
Refer to the Committee on Finance.
Appropriation of $671,897 from the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Department of Homeland Security to Brock, City of Brockton Fire Department Grant Fund, and an appropriation of $67,189 from unappropriated estimate receipts of fiscal 19 of the general fund to the Fire Department FEMA DHS grant match.
Refer to the Committee on Finance.
resolved that the Chief Financial Officer, John Condon, Director of Planning and Economic Development, Rob May, appeared before a committee of the city council to review the parking garage project, the reason for the deficit, and the strategies to ensure adequate funding for the construction of this facility.
Refer to the Committee on Finance.
We have the granting of
President.
Counselor Sullivan.
Again, we respectfully ask that that be the second fin com in October.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have the granting of Mass Electric Company of Verizon, New England, Inc., request permission to install stub pole 3-84 on Spring Avenue, 40 feet northeast of existing pole 3, in order to remove two guy wires off a tree for the City of Brockton.
The question on, on this one is granting by a hand vote. All in favor?
Yes, but we hear the stipulations.
Opposed? This one is granted. This is the Spring Avenue one.
Yeah, okay.
Granted to Mass Electric Company of Verizon, New England, Inc., request permission to install stub pole 39-84 on Court Street, 40 feet north of existing pole 39, in order to support leaning pole 39. A guy wire was previously removed from the tree in front of house number 366.
And this is the one we want to turn, Counselor Sullivan.
Mr. President, I respectfully ask that we do a conditional approval of this, with the condition precedent that there has to be proof to the city clerk that this double pole was indeed removed prior to formal approval or granting.
Okay.
That's in the form of a motion.
Second. Motion's been made, and second, and you've got that information right, Mr. Clerk?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor of that by a hand vote? Opposed? So be.
Mr. President, there's a late file at the desk.
Yes, there is a late file.
Order in council, September
Motion to accept a late file?
Second.
Yes.
All in favor? Is there a move? Yep. Go right ahead, Mr. Clerk.
And council, September 24, 2018, order that the current moratorium relating to marijuana retail sales, cultivation, distribution, or other related activities enacted by the city council pursuant to Section 27-24, paragraph 3, excuse me, of the revised auditors of the City of Brockton, shall not apply to those medical marijuana dispensaries, medical marijuana treatment centers, medical marijuana manufacturers, medical marijuana retail dispensaries currently located within the city, in which our license and provision reapproved have provisional or final registration, and/or a grandfather under 935 CMR 500 by Counselor Woodrow Foul, Counsel large, Counsel President Dennis E. Ari, Counsel President.
And this will be, this item will be referred to the Committee on Finance.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Can you, Counselor Sullivan?
Mr. President, a moment of personal privilege, if I could. First of all, I just wanna let my colleagues that, that sit on the Ordinance Committee with me, we will have a, a subsequent Ordinance Committee meeting. It's gonna be on Thursday night, October 18. It'll be here at the Rom Little Theater, 6:00 PM again, October 18, Thursday night. That night, we'll have the two agenda items. We'll have the zoning and also the licensing.
Okay.
So again, if you could please duly note that. And also, I wanna thank everybody, specifically the people that were in charge. We had a wonderful event in the City of Brockton Saturday, local 144, 100th anniversary. I know many of us were there, and it was just really a special day, so kudos to them, and I think we should give a round of applause. A hundred years. Thank you, Mr. President.
I heard it was a very, it was an outstanding, outstanding affair. Yes, Counselor Azak?
A moment of personal privilege?
Yes, you may.
I would just like to remind everybody that this weekend, September 20, Friday, September 28, Saturday, the 29th, and Sunday, the 30th, is the Lebanese Festival, held at St. Teresa's Church at 343 North Main Street. I hope everybody will be there, and I look forward to enjoying some Lebanese culture with everybody. Thank you.
Very good, that's good, great. Counselor, Counselor Foul is our first, then Counselor Borgh, then Astron.
Just a moment of personal privilege?
You may.
Mr. President, I think in the last term, you worked very hard to get a home rule petition passed, which would allow retired Brockton police officers to re, to work details. Every day we have an outside agency send in an officer, we're losing quite a bit of money, 10% on the cost of that job. I don't know what happened to it. I, I'm not suggesting that somebody dropped the ball, but I would like to, if you would, further that along so that we can maybe get some of the Brockton officers who are retired and who pass all of the requirements out on the street to work those details.
I, I, I will answer your question to that, too, counsel, because I asked the mayor that just a few months ago, because a couple of the officers had asked me the same situation, and since our personnel director was leaving at that point in time, because there's some language that needs to be worked out, but I said it needs to be taken care of, because we spent enough time to try to get it in place. It, it needs to be for our people. So I will talk to him on that and bring that, bring him up to speed.
You have the charm that I don't have, so I know it'll get done, so.
Mr. President, on that, though, for, um, piece of information on that, because they're in, that, that the state is in the current election, it would have to be refiled in January, once the swearing-in goes in for the reps in Senate. Right now, if it went up to the State House, it would die. It wouldn't even get to committee, based on the timing. So it would have to be reissued after the first of the year, once there's a new swearing-in.
No, we just got it back last year.
They're in now, they're up now, though. The reps in Senate will be up now.
But, but everything got passed, everything's been passed.
Right, right.
See what I'm saying? Everything came back to us.
It's sitting somewhere in committee, and it's not
Not in our committee.
No, up at the State House.
No, it's not sitting there.
Well, it was at one point, but then it was refiled because it died. What I'm saying now is it would die again.
All right, now I'm gonna have a quick discussion. Officer, we have it already. It's already done.
Yes.
Yeah, we have it.
It was approved?
It was approved, and personnel just didn't work on it right away.
Really?
To be truthful, I'm not trying to
The governor signed it.
Yeah.
When did the governor sign it?
Yeah, I don't think the governor signed it.
Yes, you did.
Really?
There you go.
That's good that we get notice of that, huh?
It came back and forth a few times, because Senator Baker
Yeah, but the 11 of us would never notify that it was passed. I know that for a fact.
Who came here?
Ah.
Uh, I believe so.
Okay.
I mean, I'll, I'll check it out.
I'll call Governor Baker, he and I are buddies, I'm sure he'll send me a copy.
I will, and I'm not trying to, but, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Clerk, if you might, would you please go back and check and see when that was?
Already told her to do that.
Okay, yeah, because as far as I know, it was, it was last, if I'm not mistaken, it was last summer, almost, early fall.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, when it came back. It did go back and forth, counsel, I'm not disagreeing with you on that.
But we have the two union presidents, it get passed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So it did, okay.
All right, good.
But what, he will get it, so we, we all have it. Counselor Beauregard?[1639.52]